The testimonial oath of presenters, anyone that's here to present today, please be advised you are under oath before the Commissioners' Court. Public comments, Mr. Garcia. We have one public comment from Mr. Oscar Ortiz.
Morning Judge and Commissioners. I wanted to make a public comment regarding the travels approved last minute, and this also can be extended to any that have been approved in the past and any going forward. I'm looking for clarification on the county's travel policy. The way I've been learning how to do my job is from the trainings I have attended, reaching out to other treasurers across the state, and reading the government code. When something's not in the government code, I love to see what has been approved in Commissioners' Court. And I've gone through the minutes and I haven't really found anything that explicitly states what our policy is. From what I have seen since being here is that you have to fill out the travel voucher form and get it approved in Commissioners' Court. But sometimes after it gets approved, it may get questioned or second guessed. So also now I'm being told that if somebody doesn't bring their receipt or a specific agenda, they might have to pay back the county. And if that is the county's policy, I would just like to be told that by Commissioners' Court. I'm ultimately just looking for clarification and consistency in what the rules are because this kind of affects how I better do my job because I'm one of the person, people in charge of releasing county funds. And I don't know if this is something that can be cleared up before the minutes are approved or if this has to be a separate item on a future agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. 1.6 Approval of Minutes of Regular Meeting of July 10, 2023. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Odena. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. 2.1 Approval of Bonds. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. We do have two bonds, one in regards to Mr. Gabriel Rojas, Peace Officer, and also for Jamie Campos at the County Clerk's Office. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of bonds. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ms. Rubokawa. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I am going to open up for public comments, just one more briefly. I've been advised by Commissioner Alonso Carmona that he had a public comment.
Judge, I put on the, recently put on the newspaper that we're only going to pick ratch once a month. We've been getting it every day almost. So it's on the newspaper, it's going to be once a month. And if I need to bring it before Commissioners' Court, I will do so. Also, I'm looking into purchasing a spreader. And it's for $364,000, but we'll save a lot of money on the long run. We don't have to contract it out if we're doing right now. We can do the same job that these companies can do. So that's what I plan to do. And I also have the money under the CEO. And I'll just draw it up to your attention in case you have any questions. You can put in the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner. 2.2 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Authorizing Resolution Approval of Proposed Statewide Opiate Settlement Agreement. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Request, 2.3 Request Approval to Subdivide 15 Acres of Land Near Dimas County Arena by Mr. Rogelio Muñoz, Rogelio Martinez, excuse me. There's no representative here, so no action taken. 2.4 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Monthly Report for County Extension Agent Ms. Alyssa Cruz for the month of June 2023.
Good morning Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Subway to the month of June, I attended the District 12 4-H Leadership班 and assisted there. We had several youth attend from across the district. It was a good turnout. I also, along with committee members, conducted two validation over the past month. I hosted a 4-H poster project day for the kids to make projects. I mean, made posters on the different projects we offered to hopefully, so they can kind of go over what we offer at our kickoff and pockets. I conducted the club charters for the new year. So that was a return as a club, and the kids can enroll again once August comes. I also conducted the Gold Start interviews for Uvalde County Ortho, Zavala County Agent. They asked me to do that, so I was able to kind of get on there and give them my advice for that. I also did a pesticide management training through E-Track that's offered by Acrilife Extension. And then also for the month of July, I'm going to be hosting a chronic wasting disease workshop. Chronic wasting disease is actually a neurological disease in service, which is like white elk, so elk and moose. So I'm going to offer that for producers in the area that want to attend. And I do have about 15 that have already RSVP'd for that. So if y'all were available that day, y'all can come by. You're welcome to just stop right here at the presentation. It'll be along with Texas Parks and Wildlife and the wildlife, wildlife especially for our district.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rubokawa, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
2.5 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Approval for County Extension Agent Ms. Alyssa Cruz to attend the 69th Annual Beef Cattle Short Course in College Station for August 7th through the night, 2023. I'm trying to breathe and talk at the same time, so I apologize. Motion by Commissioner Odena, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rubokawa. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cruz. 2.6 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Monthly Report from FCH Agent Ms. Kari Samoniosa. I'll entertain a motion to table. Motion by Commissioner Rubokawa. Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 2.7 Monthly Report from Rodeo of the Arena Event Coordinator Meswada Lupe Puente for the month of June 2023.
Good morning Judge, good morning Commissioners. For the month of June for the arena, we had two meetings, one training, nine events. And for H, we had one and extension on this one. That was for the arena. Johnny, Coria, La Sita, we had two free markets. And for the Winkies and Double Park, we had one party. No events for the Winkies and Double Park. No events for the Roman Field. No events for the Baywatch Recreation Center. And for the Action Trail Recreation Center, we have one funeral mansion, oh, one funeral, one fundraiser and one party. And for Sports Complex, no events. Anyone have any questions?
I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Rubokawa. Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
I'm sorry Judge, I have one question. I've been getting some calls regarding the parks for the summer, like using water slides and stuff. Are, are they allowed, like the water slides, to be used?
I think it depends on...
Like, for example, for the, for the Winkies and Double Park. To my knowledge, I know they can't use them inside the pavilion, but they can have outside the pavilion? Is that correct, Mr. Cruz?
She's asking about those inflatable water slides, that they can be used like on the grass but not on the, on the actual basketball court.
They can.
On the feet, I think it's allowed.
Okay, and how does it go by with the water? Like them using the water during the time of the party?
We never had on the floor, so. I guess when you charge, I guess, if the fee for the water.
I think that's whenever we can reevaluate. We reevaluate the contract and the fees and include that for any liability issues also.
Okay.
Can we pay city water there?
Because I just got a call this morning. The seniors want to have like a fun day on the, on the pavilion. But I did tell them that they can use the water slides, but they have to be outside the pavilion, not inside the pavilion.
Of course.
But I was just wondering about, you know, the water.
Also, I get a fee.
Do you think you can be on that?
If it's that's fault and if they fall, someone's going to get hurt. Outside is all right.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Puente.
The rest of it, they use them outside, but they, they have to pay the city $25 to use the water. We have a water slide. So it's $25 if they pay to the city.
We can sit down and visit on those contracts, Ms. Puente.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
2.8 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Monthly Report from JP Precinct 1, Ms. Sonia Perez for the month of June 2023.
Good morning Judge, Commissioners.
I have a question Judge. On 2.8, the, on the documentation we have, at the top it says Precinct 11, does, like a lot of your documents...
It's supposed to be Precinct 1, it's just never gotten verified with intent to change it.
So that's on intex part, okay.
Because they have it as Precinct 1, Hold in Place 1. So they put Precinct 1, Hold in Place 1. That's why they have it like that. It's confusing if you're looking at it like that.
I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Odena. Any discussion?
Ma'am, have you done any burn ban citations?
I have not received any, not that I know of. I haven't asked my staff, they usually notify me. Have you issued any in my precinct?
I don't, I can't...
I mean, not you, but have you...
I can keep up with them on the work.
Okay, I haven't, I have no idea. I haven't been told by my staff that they have. I haven't had anybody contact and wanting to speak to me about it.
Citation would be panned out there, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Thank you Judge.
I have the next item, Judge.
2.9 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Switch Staff Name to Deputy Clerk Lilia R. Alfaro to attend the Legislative Update on August 21st in San Marcos, Texas.
This was already brought before Commissioners' Court for approval for my previous staff to attend. But now that she's no longer with us, I wanted to have my new staff attend. And I just wanted to have the name changed.
Motion by Commissioner Rubokawa, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Odena. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you Judge.
Judge, I have a concern. I did reach out to Commissioner Carmona that our air conditioner on the third floor is out. Possible Casa Geras office and mine are extremely hot. But as soon as you walk out into the lobby, the courtroom, on the third floor, everything is working except on our two offices and in the storage room.
I stated to you already, the part's backordered. As soon as we get it, it'll be installed.
I understand that, I was just letting you know.
But I have instructed you that...
Excuse me?
I have, I told you all.
You've instructed me?
Yes.
Okay, you advised me.
Or whatever, I mean, you want to take it. But I have told you that...
Okay, I just haven't had anybody check upstairs, that's why I'm bringing that up.
Backordered, as soon as we get it, we'll have it installed.
But my question is, why is it just our office and not anywhere else?
Because they run on different air conditions, ma'am. There's about six air conditions out there, and this one runs in a different place.
I just haven't had anybody check it, so that's why I was...
Well, that's what I'm telling you. I had it checked.
Okay, I haven't been told otherwise.
And I have told you.
Because my keys, y'all need to go into my office.
But I understand, but I have told you all, over and over.
No, this is the second time you've told me.
Okay, I'm not going to entertain going back and forth arguing. Judge, well, go ahead, I understand.
I'm not going to be like, I'm not doing my job, which I am. But I have instructed them that the parts are backordered, and there's no telling when I'm going to...
He's going to, we're going to go ahead and check that Judge. I mean, there's nothing at this point really that can be done. He's ordered the parts, so we'll...
And he's going in about six weeks.
Thank you Judge. Thank you Commissioner. Discussion and Appropriate Action for Monthly Report: JP Precinct 2, Mr. Alberto Esquivel for the month of June 2023.
Good morning Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Judge, where's your office?
Give me one second Commissioner. Motion by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Odena. Questions?
Judge, any burn ban tickets? Excuse me? Any burn ban tickets?
No, sir.
Where's your office at, downstairs, on second floor?
Yes, sir.
I was just wondering because the approval was also that the judges would be on the second floor, correct?
Right. I was offered on the third floor.
Correct.
I decided to stay for my secretary because the office that I was offered, no windows, no nothing. It's all closed and closed. I didn't like that one. This one, I do have windows.
Because the move was made, we weren't aware of it. That's why I'm asking, which one is your office?
There in the second floor, where Lisa is, my secretary is.
Thank you.
I, I said I had offered one on the third floor. I liked that one better because... What I offered, it had no windows, nothing. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Judge, is the revenue on your report, is it correct? Is the revenue on your report, is it correct?
Yes. I'm going to come in again. I'm getting slow.
Because I know you have, the citations are there, the numbers are there, but the revenue, so I just wanted to make sure that was correct or not.
Now, you know, now that, it used to, that we could do warrants, but not anymore. You know, the state doesn't allow us, no KPS either. We just send out letters, that's it. But we used to do warrants. I was done away with the state.
That legislation, that KPS profile? When Commissioner Rubokawa asks about that revenue, Judge, is that because you're not having people attend your court?
They don't, we just don't pack them up, they don't...
They don't show up.
When it's time for them to renew their license, we need to start coming in. But our licenses are renewed about four, five years. Then they worry about it. In the meantime, they don't. But the state is putting a lot of pressure on what they go and try to renew their license. This comes up on their record. Or they're not allowed to renew their license until their citations are paid. But a lot of them wait until the very last minute, when their licenses are about to expire, that's when they start coming in. So let's say I get a ticket, my, my doesn't expire till, take 2/28. And if I get a ticket, I'm not going to wait till. I'm going to wait till 2/28. That's what people are doing, right? Hurry up, buddy.
Excuse me, but why, how long do you, they have to pay the citation? 30 days, 10 days, or what is it?
Well, the, the citations state they're about, or before 10 days to appear, before the magistrate.
Okay, but if they don't show up, what do you do then?
Well, we can't issue any warrants. We can send them a letter.
Right, there you go.
We can send them a letter, whether they respond or not.
But don't we have a company that takes care of that?
Yes. The, the company mails them the letter. I think that's after like 60 days or maybe 90 days, if I'm not mistaken. And that letter that they get, it does state that a warrant may be issued. And that's when sometimes they come in, because they're afraid about the warrants. But we're not allowed to do warrants anymore.
Right, right, right.
But the company that, that sends in the letter, it does state that they over fine plus late fees and, you know, warrant may be issued.
Judge, isn't there a, the way that when they get stopped and they, they do have citation outstanding? Like, I believe the, once it has no license, you can leave, impound your car, correct? You can have the record.
Yes. I don't know about that one.
I don't, that would be, I was going to say, a trooper deputy whoever's up there, they have a driver without a license, they're not going to be able to even have their car registered.
So who can get information to give them to send you? So there's something, oh, four or five tickets and they're still driving around?
They are.
Because what used, what used to happen, as Judge said, before legislation changed, if you can have a KPS provided, is they're not stopped, instead of showing up on their, on their, on their list group when they run in, that they have a KPS provided.
Another thing Commissioner, yeah, we can mail out letters, but on my, on my budget, we have to, have to go up on the postage because now we're being charged for postage. When in the old courthouse, it was just a machine, we didn't get charged for. Now each office is being charged for postage. So, yeah, we can mail out, but hundreds and hundreds of letters, I mean, that's...
No, that's why I was just wondering because I don't know that sometimes a trooper or a deputy will impound a vehicle with no license. But, you know, you look into that and you know what you're doing.
Right. If they do have a warrant accorded automatically, they're, they get arrested. Other than that, I don't think the deputy, well, when they run the, the license, I think they only share it for warrants, not by citation, outstanding citations. I may be wrong, I don't know. Maybe the sheriff can answer that question, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you Judge.
Thank you.
2.11 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Monthly Report from JP Precinct 3, Ms. Vaticia Avnades for the month of June 2023. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ms. Rubokawa. Any discussion?
Ms. Same question, any burn ban citations?
Judge, given that Judge Perez had a busy month, your revenue has increased by one and double. Judge, get out of by 75%. Judge Perez, I'm sorry.
Any other questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you Judge. 2.12 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Monthly Report from JP Precinct 4, Mr. Alfredo Martinez for the month of June 2023.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning.
Good morning, please.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Motion to approve.
Entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Odena, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rubokawa. Any discussion?
Same question Judge, any burn ban...
Uh, no, no sir. Not that I know of.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Thank you Judge.
Thank you.
Question, there is a question.
Mr. Perez, or please may I ask you to answer me. The funding for the new building for the JP's office at Precinct 4, is the funding still available?
Should we go check on that?
Check your base there. Word out there is that the money is gone, they don't know where it's at. So that's the word out there. I need to make sure for that funding is there. I don't appreciate anybody saying that. I myself, and I'm sure everybody else here, we didn't take that money. But it should be there, as you know, where it's at, and what we're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that CEO money? 2.13 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Monthly Report from District Clerk Meswada Salazar Gonzalez. She's out of office. Entertain a motion to table. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Excuse me. Second by Commissioner Rubokawa. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 2.14 Discussion and Appropriate Action: Monthly Report from County Clerk Mr. Mario Garcia for the month of May and June 2023.
These are two months, Judge and Commissioners. Pre-adjournment for the State Conference. But both reports are here for May and for June. And the category highlighted under fine, that's our common court.
I'll entertain a motion.
Aha.
Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rubokawa. Second by Commissioner Rourcaba. Any discussion?
Judge, I just want to point out one thing. As far as the security for the old courthouse, I've had several incidents where they come in to see me before I know it, they're standing in front of my desk. But the Linda, you know, good thing she has her office right at the entrance, but she happens to be away, and other officers will just swing in, and we don't know what, what they is or what they want.
Thank you for that information. We are working collectively with the Sheriff's Office. I've advised with Sheriff Castaneda, and we are trying to work on a grant, I hope with this OLS grant, to be able to implement more courthouse security, not only at this courthouse, but also the historical courthouse and the Auditor and Treasurers Office. So we are working on that. I have advice with the Sheriff as well.
I do have a few most that are coming this week. She's interested to take it, so she will come in and interview, and pass the background, hopefully we'll hire her this week.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Two point fifteen, discussion on appropriate action, approval travel for County Clerk Mario Garcia, Deputy Clerks, Belinda Sardova and Sally Flores, to attend the forty-first Annual Election Law Seminar, July thirty-first through August in Austin, Texas. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Second by Commissioner Odena. This is just for the clerks, not yourself?
For clerks, and myself.
And yourself, okay. Any discussion?
I can add, Judge, this particular seminar, on what we're hearing on our register, there's going to be some security. The items on the agenda are pretty serious. And news media is supposed to be there. I'm going to try and avoid any interviews that come to me, but it's pretty important, this particular seminar. One particular item is, according to the Secretary of State Office, they want every county, and county clerks or elections administrators offices that conduct elections, to have prepared what they're calling an active shooter plan. I might need assistance, I'm sure I'll need assistance from the Sheriff's Department on that.
As a matter of fact, I know the grants and planning department is actually working on that. I was going to get with the Sheriff's Office and also with the Fire Department. We have been approached in regards to an individual out of the Governor's Office that is wanting to set a seminar, mandatory is what the legislation is trying to do now. It's a four-hour course where they offer it twice, eight to twelve, and then one to five, to allow half of an office to go in the morning, and then the other half can work, and then the other half goes. So we are working on that. I have discussed that with the Sheriff. I know that Chief Deputy Ruth reached out to me over the weekend advising me about a course that they want to put together, that would be offered for Dimon County employees. Danny, go ahead.
Excuse me? Always going to the seminar, one of them is charging the room, and the other one's not. I always have to the elected officials, but whenever other departments go, they don't share rooms, so are they okay with sharing the room?
They're okay.
They're okay, so let them go, and they don't.
Yeah, I always share that first.
No, they're okay sharing the room. Thank you, Sheriff.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Any objection? Motion carries. Two point sixteen, monthly report from Commissioners' Court for the month of June 2023. Commissioner Odena? Any update or report that you'd like to give your constituents?
Well, you think, Judge, is that we're having issues out there on different roads, just to be a beat, excessive beat? With that, half of them is in the amount of traffic that's in doing on that road. That's kind of, I would call that the major issue of this place. Is there any question, if anybody's down?
Commissioner Carmona?
Uh, we're working on this condo in County Road 101, which has not been done completely with, uh, they're chipping steel, and we're working on the other county roads. Togini Lane is coming along, we ran into a couple of issues, and one is a cover that was covered by the state, so we're going to go ahead and, we're going to go ahead and replace that. And, but County Road 101 from two seventy-seven up to fourteen oh seven, and Semadana, and I think it was, we have already chipped in steel. Other than that, and Houston Street is coming around, they have put finally the curb in, they were having issues trying to get the cement. So hopefully within the next couple of days, we're going to add the oil and have a take.
Commissioner Juan?
Where do I start? We're trying to address all the roads, I have a hope, so this Commissioner Rourcaba, but we're getting there, we're, they're all passable, they're not the intro abiding plates, so I mean, upside downs or whatever, you know, we maintain them regularly. So, other than the ones that we're working on, on a hundred percent, the rest we take care of ourselves.
Judge, you ordered these vehicles to install in Torizo Hill, but the ones that came in, I didn't like them, so I sent them back. So all we're waiting for, we must come in, we're at Leninas and Diamond Age working on the road, only after we're assisted. From the Commissioners, I only have two trucks, all we need is more trucks to help me haul the journal, to fix at least a mile from Diamond Age, or a few minutes from Mr. Carmona's site, to my side, that way at least those two ranchers can at least have a way out, getting, if it gets flooded or anything on there. And after that, we'll continue working slowly this way.
Thank you, Commissioners. I entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Rourcaba, second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any objection? Motion carries. Two point seventeen, discussion on appropriate action, approval to extend Jose Fregoso vacation time, precinct one.
Judge, this is vacation time that Joe Fregoso from the road ring, he tried to keep taking a day every week to bring his vacation down and not lose it. We've just been extremely busy, and he's been having to help anywhere else, so requesting, we're requesting to see if we can extend the time to him.
Question, question?
How much time, a month?
I would say at least a month.
Any other questions? Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection?
Aye.
One objection by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Discussion, two point eighteen, discussion on appropriate action, approval to reinstate burn ban. I entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Odenas, or second? Second by Commissioner Rourcaba. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Any objection? Motion carries.
Can I say something on the burn ban?
Yes, sir.
The, just through the record, the state goes on to levels of conditions that are hazardous to the fires, and whatever it pertains to. But we were on stage two a couple of months ago, and now the state has, or the Sports Service has upgraded to stage three, which is more hazardous to, for anybody that's burned. That's why we're leaning towards the burn ban, because due to the fact that we don't want those fires spreading. And, like I said earlier, citations are being given, and notices are in the newspaper, notices are on our Facebook page, and on our, I mean, you go to our county's website, and you also, you can also find them under the Texas Forest. Most of the state is already becoming into a burn ban state, so that is the information I got. If anybody has questions, call any members of the Fire Department, or myself, and I'll be glad to answer your questions.
Any other comments? Thank you. Two point nineteen, discussion on appropriate action, approval to advertise for roof bids for District Clerk's Record Storage Building, precinct two. A motion by Commissioner Odena. Second by Commissioner Rourcaba. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Two point twenty, discussion on appropriate action, approval to close out Lamis Sports Complex at ten AM.
Ten PM.
Ten PM, I apologize, ten PM.
As you know, we're, we're having problems with the people jumping the fence and everything else, that way, come to the Sheriff, he said, as long as there are no signs anywhere, we can hide it for any, any booths that we inject. So there's a sign out that says, "Art closes at ten." Also, there can be no alcohol and no smoking also under.
I entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Rourcaba, or second? Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Any discussion?
I have a question, Judge. In the, during the summer, when the kids are paying their terms, till what time, do you know till what time they stay out there?
Normally, depending on how many teams there is, they can finish probably seven, eight PM. If there's a lot of teams, they'll go through about ten or eleven.
That's my only concern, too. They usually try to start a little later because of the heat.
Correct. Yes.
What about when they have those midnight games, or what if, midnight?
I think the approval to close would be to set the ten PM as normal business hours, however, when it comes to them contracting up, paying to book it, it'll be based on the contract, and that could be stipulated in the contract when they sign it.
Mr. Carmona, remember last year, or the year before, we did away with the midnight methods? Because of all the fighting, and the deputies that were called out, and some of it involved some award deputies?
No reason.
A midnight method?
Probably was related to that.
It was last year. It was last year, this year, it was last year, this year, they held it regular, but not, it didn't come through Commissioners' Court, they just decided to move it to a different time.
So I wouldn't go into any hours.
I think regardless of anyone's caught there with alcohol or whatnot, we'd still have to get a deputy involved, and that'll be a citation under through the Court of Porcher or through the Sheriff's Office. But I think in terms of clarifying for the time, if they go over the ten PM, it'll be on a stipulation on the contract. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Two point twenty-one, discussion on appropriate action, approval to purchase a 2023 Toyota Tundra pickup for precinct three and six.
We were going to buy a board, and it was fifty-four thousand, and Tundra is twenty-six thousand, so we're saving close to eight thousand dollars.
I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena. Second by Commissioner Rourcaba. Any discussion?
Judge, when I saw this, I was like, wow, because I had sent, I had sent backup for one of my trucks, and I told her, hold off for a minute.
Yes, thirty, thirty-five, eighty.
To buy one, just a regular Chevy pickup, twenty twenty-three, and then my one in twenty twenty-four, it was forty-eight thousand, but it was not through the whiteboard. So I said, no, let me look into it, and then I saw this, and I was like, oh, no, it's cheaper.
Yeah, he's been looking for a while. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection?
Aye.
One objection, Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Motion carries. Two point twenty-two, discussion on appropriate action, approval to contract Johnny Gloria to paint front and back of fence at the CSA labor only.
Judge, I was going to go ahead and paint the fence, like, we get discussed, but I'm going to hold off on it right now, because there was only one person that responded. We called Federico and Jesse Ramirez, but they didn't respond, so I'm going to try again.
Is there any way that we could, I mean, I don't think it looks horribly bad the way it is, but perhaps maybe staining it just for weatherization purposes? And have your county employees do that?
I see they only have white people.
Seal it. Seal it.
Yeah, seal it to where you keep the same color, and it just seals.
Stains, the seal. Perhaps you would volunteer your employees to go and seal it for Commissioner.
I know, but I mean, it's not a, it's a process.
I mean, I'm saying for purposes of saving the county money, instead of us having to bid it out and getting a contractor, we can get one of our employees to stain it or seal it. Should I go send Mirta myself to go seal it?
But, Judge, are you, we're just.
Give me something to wear, Mirta.
Are we going to paint it or seal it? Because painting is one, and sealing is another.
We were going to paint it so it lasts longer, because usually when you put just the sealer, it still turns brown. So the, the, the only thing we had talked about was painting the color of the building that we had, to match.
Like tan, or what color?
The CSA.
Oh, I know, but what color, like a tan?
Yeah. If you use an apple, it'll last a lot longer, so. To me, really, that project, like, concluded in, when I built the fence, when they built the fence, I didn't build it, they built it. So it's up to Commissioner Odena what he wants to do, because that's his, all the CSA is his project, so.
Well, it's under the county judge's seal.
Well, if it's under your seal, you're okay.
Just saying, that's where all the money from the county judge's office went to, the CSA building.
We'll help, we'll help everybody, we'll do whatever. Turn where you want to go, I'll put it back at the edge.
I'm just trying to save money for the county, is what I'm saying.
That's what I thought about doing to the, to the, you know, these ones, the storage.
Paint it. So I'll entertain a, or no action on this item.
Judge, if I may, and I just have to put this up here. The landscape plans are guitar.
We have, thank you for that opinion of yours, Mr. Garcia. We have gone to do a semi-watru, Mr. Odena and Commissioner Juan and I, and we've advised them that the aesthetics of the landscaping is not all that great or appealing to the public. So we are in discussion with the architect and the contractor to maybe perhaps give the CSA building a pop of color with maybe some alternative flower decisions. Thank you.
Can you just tell me on that building, Judge, the rolling door, the story building, that building's falling?
Perfect. Any other questions, discussions? Do you have a green thumb, Commissioner Rourcaba? Maybe you can go and look at the flower stuff, because I know it.
Judge, I'm just saying, no, I know we haven't discussed it yet, but there's still a lot of debris on the, for our, where you were instructing me to do that goal, I mean, that payment, and I wanted to know.
What the status is.
Yeah, who's going to take care of it, or what are we going to do? There's some very low spots, and if we put that as the way it is, it'll mess up. Because there's some very low spots, and if we put that as well the way it is, it'll mess up.
We'll get with Mr. Calzada. We'll get with Mr. Calzada soon to get you an answer to that.
Because that company should have left already just to pay, really. But you know the work they're doing, so...
Correct. 2.23, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval for travel for Commissioner Precinct 3 and Juan Carmona to attend the Legislative Conference in Austin, Texas. Entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Gobokawa, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Urenda seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection?
One abstention.
And one abstention by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. 2.24, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval for Hendrickson Road change order to reduce scope of work and add concrete pavement over road culverts. Mark, can you? Good morning, Mr. Guevara.
Judge Dan Hale with the only decisions. Thank you, Damian. There we go. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, good to see you all. This particular change is something that the Commissioner and I have been talking about, trying to reduce the scope of work, bring it within our tolerable budget.
I appreciate that.
We originally did about three miles worth of work, still about two and a half miles worth of work. The work is starting right at the end of the foreign market rate, and the work that we kept in there, Judge, in the court, includes all the drain structures, which is one of the most important things. And what we did add back in, Commissioner, you and I talked about it, on the previous section of Hendrickson, we concrete paved over the main channels across the roadway. We put that back in with this, and still ready to get effect about an 8% or a $200,000 reduction in the contract. And I'll be glad to answer any questions tomorrow.
I'll entertain a motion.
So it's on benefits for our councilor?
Go ahead. A motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Urenda? Discussion?
So it's gonna be a change order for our benefit, the county's benefit.
It'll reduce half the amount, I guess there will be a reduction of about $228,000 in some terms.
So the price is gonna go down, which is great, because it'll save the accounting money.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have one abstention, which is Commissioner Gobokawa. 2.25...
Thank you, Judge, for...
Thank you, Mr. Guevara. 2.25, Discussion and Appropriate Action. The use of commercial vehicles, including 18-liters in Carrizo Hills subdivision 4, 5, and 7. I'm gonna recall that item. She stepped out. 2.26, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval to hire one full-time employee for the sanitation department. That's also her item, so I'm gonna recall that item. 2.27, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval for Roden Bridge Secretary to become a notary public. Is that for Row? The only concern I have, Commissioner, with that one is that we approved for the other young lady to get it, and then she resigned a week or two later. I know that we do have notaries here at the courthouse, and they need it to be utilized, but that's just...
For our secretary? Your girl?
Yes.
Well, she paid it at all?
No.
What she claims?
No, the county paid for it, sir. We had it approved, we had it approved of the honest... You remember, Mr.?
But she paid for it, right?
No, she...
I don't remember, Judge, but I just want to point out that if the county provided for that, she needs to turn in that notary.
Yes, Commissioner, I think that the county paid for it. The county paid for it? Yes, the county paid for it, because we gotta PO for it. So we gotta PO for it. That's my only concern, is that it got approved, and then she got resigned.
I understand, because she, in the state, has paid for it. That's why I wasn't delighted.
We can get clarification, and we can get through the claim docket with Mr. Pereira's office.
And now we'll pick it up.
Yeah, we'll get it clarified, and if the county did in fact pay for it, we'll advise you so that you can act accordingly. But that was my only concern, is the fact that we did that already once, and I know we do have notaries at the courthouse for anyone to utilize if they need, but that's my opinion. Any other questions? All in favor?
Any objections?
Excuse me, I appreciate that. Motion to approve the Roden Bridge Secretary to become a notary public? Motion by Commissioner Gobokawa?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Juan. Carmona? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection?
Judge, if that happened, like you said, is there something we can do to remove from the notary public in the county, did they pay for it?
Well, like I mentioned, she needs to turn in her booklet.
Yeah, it's a booklet and a seal.
To my office.
I'll call her and...
Well, we're gonna, well, we're gonna get clarification first, though. We're gonna clarify in my office through the PO system, and then we're gonna clarify through the financial docket to see if, in fact, the county paid for it. If they did, then I'll advise you guys, and then you can, like I said, take whatever action is needed. Motion carries. 2.28, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Excuse me, approval for County Judge Marta Ponce, Commissioner Valerie Gobokawa, Commissioner Juan Carmona, Commissioner Alonso Carmona, and Commissioner Jose Urenda to attend the Annual County Judges and Commissioners Association Conference in Abilene, Texas. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection?
Are we adding Commissioner Minas?
Commissioner Urenda's supposed to be on there.
Yes.
He inadvertently was not on there. Did you turn in your paperwork, Commissioner?
I did.
Okay, thank you. 2.29, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Monthly report from Dimmitt County Assistant Fire Chief, Mr. David Torres, for the month of May and June 2023.
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
As you can see, for the month of May, we had a total of three calls. We had several vehicle fires, also including the South Padre dispense of the South of Masherton. So we were, the month of May, we were pretty busy. For the month of June, we had a total of 12 calls, including several 18-litre fires, several vehicle fires, and also the MVA tally that we had on Luke 572.
I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Gobokawa, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Urenda? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? One abstention, Mr. Juan Carmona?
I have an... I have an...
2.30, Discussion and Appropriate Action. To purchase fire hoses from Navco due to back order of hoses with an undetermined timeframe of 3/20/2023.
Judge, we had originally, that's the equipment that we had tried to purchase with stated marketing when we purchased the truck. Unfortunately, their hoses have been back ordered since, as you can see, after the date. That was our last updated date, and they still haven't had a date that they would be getting to. So what I'm trying to do is just advising the court that we're just gonna go ahead with the second company that has the equipment already in stock and ready to ship. So we can be placed on the new truck that we're gonna have.
I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Gobokawa? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention with Mr. Juan Carmona? Thank you, Mr. Torres.
Thank you.
2.31, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Quarterly report from airport for the months of April, May, and June 2023. Morning, Mr. Martinez. Mr. Martinez, I wanted to commend you publicly for the way that the airport has been running. I got a phone call this week in regards to some people that came from out of town, and they've flown out of two other locations outside of Dimmitt County, and they said that the airport was very well taken care of and very well operated and managed. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you for trying.
Yes, thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Gobokawa?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona? Is there any questions or discussion?
You contacted me a while back on electrical issues on the iron?
No, I used to have it on. There's a meter there, and it was gonna be personal use, so I was hoping to contract to electric company, so I just needed, we just needed a...
Inspection inspector? Have you been addressed?
No, I haven't, I haven't come up there yet. I mean, I haven't fully contacted.
Okay. I'll give Mr....
I just wanted to ask a personal thing, is there any...
Okay.
Any other questions?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? And one abstention by Commissioner Juan Carmona? Thank you, sir. 2.32, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval of invoices for AWOS airport repair. I'll entertain a motion.
Aye.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona? Second by Commissioner Urenda? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. 2.33, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval of travel for 365th Clerk to attend the LGS Annual Users Conference, August 8 in Irving, Texas. Morning. It's okay.
I'm with 365th District Board, and we work with the LGS system, the software, and there's gonna be a training held in Irving, Texas from August 8 through the 11. And I know it's a system that is very beneficial to all of us, and this would definitely be a conference that would be definitely worth attending to, as we extend the knowledge and the utilization of the software. So, and upon my return, of course, it would be to, you know, also train others, you know, to the better utilization of the software.
And Ms. Giles, you're with the Judge of 365th Office? There was a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda? Discussion or questions?
Yes.
Yes.
This is a, but the hotel is associated with a mansion?
Yes, it would be part of, yes.
Here you have $600 a night?
No, that would be included in the registration. It's a registration plus the hotel included.
Yeah, so I was trying to say, I thought you said, but it's $840, that's for two people, correct?
Okay, yeah, that's for only one person.
The $600...
Eight hundred dollars for one room?
Right, for the entire training and the hotel.
I have another question as well. Somebody from the judge's office also put for the same conference two weeks ago?
Yes.
So you are having two people from the judge's office going?
Yes, Melissa Garcia and myself.
So do y'all both do LGS?
Yes, we do utilize the system. Everybody in the office uses it, and it was open to all users of the system. So basically, it would be Melissa and myself attending the conference, and upon the return, we can train others, you know, so that way you could avoid trouble for others as well.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
3.1, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval of travel for Dimmitt County Sheriff Chris Castaneda, Ruth Sanizeros, and Monica Espinoza, excuse me, to attend the criminal records conference on August 14 through the 18 in South Padre Island.
Morning.
Morning.
This conference, the sex offenders, Monica has done this, I used to help her, and I'm getting my access site back, and stated she's never had training on this, I've never had training on this, as they have the class. It's something I would like to go on with, or my chief also to get involved in this. We have these people going to the office, if one of us not here, at least we'll have somebody there to do it. Also, it's gonna provide the NIGRS training that both myself and the chief would like to attend, to get these trains with the NIGRS and break the regimen.
I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Urenda?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. 3.2, Approval to hire commissary clerk for Dimmitt County Jail.
We've had the position of Baker Board leave last month, and we have another person that secretly recently brought her on board to help us out with the cops here.
It's within your budget?
Yes, correct.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda? Any questions?
What's, I believe, $11 a night with that budget?
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. 3.3, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Request approval for natural gas double-deck full-size convention oven, 1,000 BTU. Are these, are they, are the ones currently in place non-useable, or are they...
Yeah, and I believe this is, needs to be replaced by a correct.
Yeah, the oven is, the bottom one, it doesn't work. It doesn't heat up, so we're just using the top one, so it's taking longer to do our the lights up and everything. We tried to fix it, and it still hasn't worked.
I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Second by Commissioner Uranda. Any discussion?
Yeah, I hate to be this way, but how can all three quotes be the same amount?
Um, that one, I just already received, I got all those. That's how they, we, I went to
Exactly, the same amount?
Yes, sir, that's, I went to the internet and everything. Also, I had a, just already got a quote from Keith right now for the oven. They just, I just received it, but it, I think, when, by the time I pressed, put all the orders submitted, I already done it. I had the key fee here.
But they're different companies, so they're all the same price?
Yes, sir.
Twenty-six. Twenty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-seven.
I have key fee that gave me just for the act, and it's thirteen thousand. I can give you the quote for that one.
That one's cheaper than
Yes, but I received it late, so I didn't put it on the
Well, that's a lot of difference.
It is. Excuse me.
From twenty-six to thirteen, that's a lot of difference.
And that one, I just already got it today, so that's why I didn't put it on the agenda.
I have a question on this. Ms. Montes, one of them says twelve, or a total of thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-four, but the other one says twenty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty?
It's the one in the bottom, thirteen.
Okay, so it's not the number that reflected there at twenty-two thousand?
Yes, that's thirteen.
Thirteen one forty-four?
Yes, ma'am.
Then you have one, one of sixteen thousand nine hundred and forty-four?
The Richmond store, the company in the Richmond store? That's sixteen thousand?
So the twenty-six thousand is for the next agenda item, but
Correct.
But for
Talking about oven.
For the oven of the oven you have, what is that quote, Commissioner Alonso? Of the other ovens?
Either ovens is thirteen.
If we were looking at, we're looking at oven and the dinner?
We're not looking at the skillet. Yes, yes.
I thought we were looking at all pulls up together.
No, we're
It's at the same one, it's one of the big ones, correct?
It's two different items.
Two different items.
So right now, we're discussing the double deck oven.
The double deck oven is this one right here.
Correct, the double deck oven is the one that's for
This is this one?
This, yes, sir.
Correct. If you go back towards the back, Commissioner, it's right here, it's sixteen thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars. Yep. Towards the back, keep coming back here. These are the ovens. Thirteen one thirty, sixteen thousand three fifty-four, and sixteen thousand nine hundred and
We're looking at the first item, but that here, right here, by you, the
Well, I mean, twenty-six thousand is still a lot for a frayer. I have a motion by Commissioner Carmona and a motion by Commissioner Uranda. We had discussion. Is there any other discussion? Any other questions? All in favor? Any objection? Motion carries. Correct, connection oven.
I know it's just a fourteen dollar difference, so do you guys prefer commercial kitchen or bin?
The reason I put that one there because I didn't have the key fee.
The Benny key.
Benny key fee, I just already got it today.
Judge, I'm sorry, for the record.
For the record, Mr. Garcia, it is 3.3, the approval of the full-size convent, convention, not connection, convention oven. 3.4 is the Discussion and Appropriate Action: Approval to approve for the Alt GSE .30 Edge Series 30-Gallon Natural Gas Tilt 90,000 BTU. Ms. Montes, in regards to the skillet, is the skillet not working?
It's not working at all, ma'am. We tried to fix it, and it's still not working. It's been there since they built, building.
So on this skillet, going back to what Commissioner Juan Carmona was saying, all the quotes you got are all the same exact price?
Yes, ma'am.
At the twenty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there warranty on the current skillet you guys have?
No, that case is, it was built back from the temple, was it? He never fixed it one of those, and then we don't want to on them.
They tried to fix it, but didn't work.
I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Uranda. Discussion?
I believe, I believe we do have funding for, and the budget I didn't check if I did or not, I don't like to.
Hold on, we'll check on that. We use the whole way actually.
Any other discussion, questions? All in favor? Any objection? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Montes.
Judge, I put there a request for Charlotte, LBN Charlotte. I don't know if you, I do request
No, I'm going to talk to Mr. Pareda about that. That's why it wasn't put on the agenda.
Okay.
Because I don't think that that's possible, but I'm going to have to meet with Mr. Pareda and Mr. Ortiz regarding that.
Okay, that's fine. May I be excused?
Yes.
Thank you.
3.5, Discussion and Appropriate Action: Jail Status and Sheriff's Report.
The only thing I have, Judge, the citations I'll be able to print out for the month on the offense reports, since we're live, I can't get anything out until we finish this month completely, and I'll be able to print out June and I believe May also. And we haven't been able to print any of that out right now, because we're going live. We have to wait for the whole month to close out, then we can get the reports.
Sheriff, and it's my understanding, in order for us to apply for the OLS grant, we have to be at the ninety percent rate, and it's my understanding that we, in fact, complete, manage to get to ninety percent.
That's correct, that's correct.
I have another question for you in regards to an email that was sent from the Governor's Office, I believe, that we might not be able to apply for any grants or be put on hold for grants because we're waiting something from the Auditor's Office?
That one, I believe, was payments for the four thousand dollars, but the DARS, everything else has been submitted. This is from, I believe, last year, or this occurred. Some of the DARS were not mentioned in the timesheets.
I simply asked that question because we've, as you know, we've been working zealously and very hard to try to get this OLS grant.
That's correct.
And if I'm given an email saying that someone at the Auditor's Office hasn't done their job, and therefore it's going to put our grants on hold, I have a serious concern with that. So I wanted to know the issue.
It's the payment, I believe, that they need to be reimbursed, the state for those unaccounted outwards, and then also the, I believe, it was a policy submitted that it needs to be worked on, like policy was submitted. Selena, you have more information on that one?
So have we taken care of that, Mr. Pareda?
Well, the problem in that one is that the DARS wasn't submitted in the Sheriff's Office, didn't match the timesheet that y'all were submitting. So that's something in the Sheriff's Office, DARS.
When I This was from back in 2022, the preliminary report. It was already brought on Commissioners' Court to pay the difference. What happened was that the DARS, it's electronic, and they said that they needed a signature, so we had to go back to the generated data certification forms now, which is what we're doing now. But they're stating that unfortunately, some of the DARS weren't matching the times from the timesheet, so there's a difference in deficiencies. So that's why they're requesting that to be paid, which is four thousand. That, and they're stating that the policy that we updated isn't to their standards, so we need to go back and update it again, put it on Commissioners' Court for it to get approved, and then upload it again.
And this four thousand dollars is a four thousand five hundred?
Yes.
Well, first of all, we hadn't seen it. Yeah, we hadn't seen it, so we didn't even know about it.
Yeah, but this was from 2022.
All right, the, the grant was
But the problem is not so much the Auditor's Office, the problem is at the Sheriff's Office.
Right, those corrections need to be done at the Sheriff's Office.
And this is not the question?
No, this is a second grant that we had this problem with. So that's why we weren't aware that this was another one that was happening.
But the four thousand dollars needs to be paid
Yes.
because of the discrepancy that was made
Because they disallowed those costs, because there was nothing to substantiate it from the DARS to the payroll, to the timesheets, yes.
Which is why now we're going back to the data certification forms.
Which is why they, I mean, they basically came back and said, okay, we look at everything you've got, and we're disallowing this amount.
So has that been
Yeah, so what we're doing right now, each deputy works the overtime, and they turn in their timesheets, we'll make sure that they have their DARS, that they match the hours. If there's some missing, or they're not turning them in, I'm going to cut their overtime off.
So at this point, in order for our staff, my staff, and the Judges' Office to be able to, hi, excuse me, for the, to apply for the OLS grant?
We need to send a check from the Auditor's Office to pay for that
That's correct.
in order for me to apply for the OLS.
That's correct, and then can we update the
The policy?
Yes.
So can we get the policy?
But the policy comes from the county. It has to be an updated county policy, regardless of overtime.
Judge, I'll show you, just expect the recognition of it, so we can bring it.
Yes, if you can get with Mr. Ortiz, and then Mr. Ortiz will draft the appropriate language that is required, so that we are, that suffices to the Governor's Office, and then he can bring that to the Commissioners' Court, so we can get that approved. We have Commissioners' Court, August 8, and I was anticipating that we submit the OLS grant August of four, August 14, correct. I need that submitted beforehand, because I'm going to have to have a special meeting so that we can approve that policy, because the OLS grant application deadline is August the 11, which is clearly before August 14. And if we don't have that policy uploaded to the Governor's Office, and we don't have that check paid out to them, reimbursement check, then Dimmitt County is again, once again, going to lose out on free grant funding that is directly needed in this county, and this only is going to help you guys, as well as many other departments. So we need to make sure we expedite that process, because we're doing all this work, and we're just going in circles, and nothing's getting done. And we're not going to be able to progress in this county if we don't get it done. So we need to make sure that we get that policy to Mr. Ortiz that is to the liking of the Governor's Office, and then we need to have a special meeting, because we're not going to be able to apply for OLS. OLS is August 11, the deadline.
We knew about the four thousand that needed to be paid, when we found out?
I found out via email on Thursday.
The first email was sent out in April.
In April?
This is already the third email that we've received.
Somebody stuck in the block, we need to pick that all up and run with it.
Well
We're losing now, first was Mr. Ortiz, Mr. Gonzalez, not Mr. Ortiz, sorry, sorry. Mr. Gonzalez, that they want to sign the
The grant, correct.
And now this, I mean, guys, we're losing millions, not talking about thousand dollars, we're losing millions for the public that's here that needs to know this. So we need to get on it and get going. This is unacceptable, it's not the first time. So we need to get on the ball and get going. We are in Mr. Pareda's office, wherever fault it is, we need to get it going. I'm not blaming anybody. Whatever the letter says, we all know.
Well, and you're correct, I mean, we need to help hold people accountable, and if No, I mean, we do have to hold people accountable, and if we have to blame somebody, we have to blame somebody, whether it's the Auditors, the Sheriffs, whoever it is. This was in 2022, obviously. I first found out on Thursday, to be quite frank, because I got the first email this Thursday or Fri- Friday, it was on Friday. I got the email Friday. And so when I saw it, of course, as you all know, I've been trying to be a warrior for OLS, and I've been going on it, and I've probably annoyed you guys and annoyed them with trying to get OLS, because you know it's a lot of money that could be utilized from this county. And so for me, that affects OLS, and it affects the work we've been doing. If I'm telling, being told by the Governor's Office that we are on a suspension, and we can't apply for grants until that's rectified. So it has to be, at this time, we can not point fingers, but we have to work collectively between the Auditors and the Sheriff's Office, and yes, we do have a new sheriff, and Chris, you've been great about answering my phone calls and trying to get it done quickly, but we need to get together ASAP so that we can submit that, and we need to get with Mr. Ortiz as the HR, so that we can have a special meeting to approve that and upload that policy, and then Mr. Pareda, we need to send that check, we need to send it.
And it doesn't matter about the check, because what happens is that they want the response about what we're doing.
Well, when I read that email specifically, it said they want their money. That's the email I read.
They want the money, and they want the response also. The work that was all, all due together.
So we need to
And I did contact the Sheriff's Office, because I, as I said, I hadn't really seen it, and I hadn't seen the report, and so I did contact him about the response, what they needed, but this email was also on vacation last week, so
That's when I found out, when you said the email that's first
Yeah, you and I both found out, and in part, it's probably because we're newly elected, but I found out the same day you did. So just, just for the record
I paid attention to, because it was a response that needed to be done from the Sheriff's Office.
So just for the record, if we can get you guys to collectively work with each other, and we can get that, so that we can have a special meeting specifically for that, for that item, for that policy.
Judge, would that be ample time to do the review? So Mr. Ortiz, can we do the policy, add to the policy, then we got, maybe get an attorney to review the additions that we did to it? Would that be enough time for
Well, Mr. Ortiz has been sending it to the Attorney at Tac for the policy, so I think we should be, there should be sufficient time, right?
Or to submit to them?
To submit the policy to Tac, to make sure that we're good?
Well, that's the thing, we, since we don't pay the, what's it called? Elected, I don't know if
Oh, yeah, we discussed that. Well, we can hand over the policy to Mr. Gonzalez as the county attorney.
Yeah, the thing is that they, they are basically, they're already told you about the, the Governor's Office wants it.
I stated the deficiencies, they want the response to the deficiencies and the policies. No, no, because they told me that the financial officer had to do that, so, but I'll do whatever I need to do. I need to do to get it done.
The personnel policy.
Any other questions? Mr. Gonzalez? We need to have a policy for, an updated policy for the overtime for the sheriff's office, and we need to have it like yesterday, because we are being suspended, if you will, from applying for OLS or any other grant for that matter because of a policy that's not up to par to the governor's office.
That's the first one I'm hearing about. I thought we had updated it last time to comply.
We did. We did, but they said no.
Did they say what it was? They didn't say what?
I'm just trying to find out what needs to be amended so that we can give them appliance. They have a sample policy, they could overdo it, so that would come back to that.
Thank you. We're at 90 now. Thank you. Any other questions? Any other comments? Go ahead.
Traffic right now, we have Sedan. Bassam, and there's Lopez also. Those three so far. We have that. Still haven't put nobody else in the other position. I'm still waiting right now, see if possibly we can work, bring in Ruston back. Jesus Lopez is the other one. Jesus Lopez.
Other questions?
Have they been checking Big Way Park?
Yes, they should be patrolling all those areas up here, even my deputies also have been out there. I'm making rounds also at night. If I come out of the wall, check here, make sure everybody parked out there, the areas.
We're going to fix that road, but I want to put spit bombs, okay? And I talked to the PT person, and I want to put some cameras out there, because usually what they do is they burn their tires on the back until they break up the asphalt. But once they do that, we're going to follow and protect and cover them properly. That's coming work. So I just wanted to make you all aware that we're going to fix it. Right now, it's a bad day, and they're going 60s. I'll let you when you fix it.
Also, put a camera, Katerina on Jacinto Street. Commissioner, you had, there was fitting material from the roadway. Put a camera out there.
We fixed the road, and then they went with either the backhoe or John Deere and scraped the rattle chair from the road ticket.
I drove around, Katerina, to see if I could find a bit of a John Deere or tractor. Probably hidden somewhere. Is somebody...
One more question. Judge, the whole contractor, HR person said that he thought employees are in their personal vehicle, the workers gone who not covered them. And I seen some of your secretaries on their personal vehicles. So you might want to make them aware of that. That's correct, right, Ortiz? So we might want to make them aware, even if they're...
When you said they're in their personal vehicle, you're talking about, what are you talking about when you say...
Some of the police secretaries.
No, I understand that. But what are you talking about in terms of, you seen them during working hours?
Yeah, during working hours, going to either the auditor or somewhere else. But they're using their personal vehicles, and they won't be covered.
I'm making sure. I know one of the deposits was down, but it should be back to days to provide back over, one of the deposits they used.
But one of them comes over here, the other's up, and they're in their personal vehicle. So you might want to wake up, make them aware that they won't be covered.
Also, Commissioner, on the burn man, we did, going to show to the next one, we did follow one person here in town with a burn man, but I have instructed the deputy supervisors, any call violation of burn man, make sure they issue citations, not warnings on those. But I want to make sure that they do get cited for that. I know we've had fires, and it's breaking quick right now. It's raining. Thank you.
Other questions? All in favor? Any objection? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
4.1, status report on utility and regulatory compliance. Mr. Hyman.
And then we have the one, never, we have problems at the closest station last week. Katerina Waterwell, the well shored it up, the pump shored it up. So it was required, the water was required to the CS pump, and so not going to go out there. And of course, I see as I really would, we mentioned, we'll send my walk through, we're waiting on them to take action.
Questions?
Commissioner, on the water well, the Katerina, haven't we had answers when they've talked before or?
Not, not. I guess that was back when Danny was dealing with, you, it probably one of the parts, the mortgage that works the most, the most.
I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ureda. Discussion? Yes, discussion.
Then, what's the status on the Brundage water system?
They had no to slap, and they're waiting for the contractor to come back and install the piping and all that. Correia?
Yes, sir. That item has until about the end of this year in terms of time when it's one of the long...
But they're running a bomb pump, and it's burning, and the people are starting to complain?
Well, the pumps and motors weren't part of that.
My question is, when are they going to get the other tanks under?
The pressure tank should be in in about four months, give or take, because the delivery time associated with maybe bathroom nodes. The fiberglass tank, we put that in there to replace the existing water seal tank. So they have several months left, but I can talk to the contractor and see where they're at in terms of the new pressure tank.
If they knew they were going to use those tanks, what did they order when they started the job?
Which tanks are you...
For the pressure tanks that we're waiting for.
Right. Well, because they couldn't order them until we executed a contract, and they signed the contract, and then they got the purchase orders in. And that was a material supplemental process. Just to go back in time, we did try to bid out that 50,000 gallon millimeter storage tank, Commissioner, but because of the inflation factors and everything else that changed from 5,000 to about 1.2 million within a two-year time frame. So we rejected all those bids, and we went back to the table and redesigned the project to the bigger pressure tank. Part of the dilemma there, from what I understand, David, is that we only serve 30, 40, 50 customers, but there are several customers that sometimes when we have a heat wave like this, that uses it to fill the lasso.
Water, yeah.
Yes. And so, yes, and that, the system was not designed to maintain that level of service. The water well was a single water well that produces about 120 gallons a minute. The two transfer pumps are rated about 100, 150 gallons per minute. So the system is only designed to support about 50 to 60 connections. The pressure tanks wanted to help out a whole lot. But if we started upsizing the motors and the pumps and the water well, that would be a pretty significant cost.
That's costing, Commissioner, we'd end up on the regular torches. But what I'm saying is, if we're in the motors and we've got to replace them.
Yes, sir. Well, there shouldn't be anything doing, the contractor's probably not doing anything with the booster pumps right now, because they won't make the transition to the larger pressure tank until later in the year. So they're not, the contract, the only thing the contract includes with the booster pumps, Commissioner, is to put another top on top. Daniel wanted to get a shed on top of the pumps to protect them from the weather a little bit. So that's, we included that in the script.
And that one well, and Brundage, is going to go through quite a bit of pressure risk at this point because of the drought and the heat. Those, that Brundage water well, you've got several ranchers that are hooked up to it, and I mean, it's beyond our control what they're really doing with the water. They just control the meters. You know that the cattle are using up their water. That's what they're using.
Yes, sir. It's a really difficult situation, because in order to provide that level of service during peak demands, we'd have to upsize the system. And during non-peak demands, you'd probably have some issues with a lot of water staying stored and maybe losing the dissipator. So, but yes, I know it's a difficult time because the Brundage system is so small.
Go ahead.
Then, is real status, what's the status on the landfill?
We're having a punchless walk through this afternoon, the tip, the final, with Mr. Hiller and the Commissioner. And we'll see how complete the project is. Hopefully, it's in good shape where we can file for a...
When was that supposed to open up, based on the plan?
Probably about six months ago. Yes, sir.
And we're working on the payment situation, because there was a clause on there that for every day that it was not completed, it was a $500 reimbursement to the county.
We're having the substantial complete, completion walk through this afternoon, so hopefully we'll find things in order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully, a better order than the CUC. Hopefully, a better order than the CUC. Any other questions? Your comments? All in favor? Any objection? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hyman. Discussion and appropriate action approval to accept 15 AC unit donations from Bluebonnet.
Morning, Judge.
Good morning.
So somebody from Bluebonnet, the AC company, or Healy Coating Company, they had offered to buy 15 windmill units for the elderly, but they want to donate them to the county, and we dispersed them. I just needed approval for that. If you guys are okay with it.
Yes, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Ureda. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubuca. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Judge, once we accept the 15 units, how will you disperse those?
I think we're going to get with the, with the Bluebonnet, because I think that they wanted to make sure that we gave them out to people that were like 65 and older. And so I think we need to set some kind of a process, because obviously, there's only 15, and we, there's a lot of people that are probably in need of fans. So we're going to get with Bluebonnet, and perhaps I'll get with Mr. Gonzalez to see if we can find a way to, without being, being fair and impartial, to have a process in which way we can give out those fans.
So we'll do it for us like equal, since we have four cities and two subdivisions that will all be included?
Well, it's going to be up to the criteria that the Commission's Court set, but one requirement you do make sure is that they have the proper connection, and if they can receive, and they can distribute. If they don't have a proper connection, then it's going to go to somebody else's. Unless they are willing to provide the services that are home to have the right connection. Some of them, it just depends on how large they are. So they may work on the right object. If not, we need to find out, make the criteria, whoever applies it. Even some more goes to attach them or maybe some sort of string.
Excuse me?
It should be on an assing basis, and that they do understand that there are lots of those also. They'll go off, you know, if they can meet those criteria that the Commission's approved, that's how I discuss. That's what I had discussed when we first came.
Judge, are we getting, have we already approved them? Afterwards, once we receive them, we're going to come back and discuss how they're going to be dispersed. Who's going to be in charge? I know it's going to the emergency management department. Are we going to send Mr. Hyman to check their homes?
So we can send, we can send Mr. Hyman to go, since he's with regulatory. But I know that we spoke to MHMR, that's how it kind of started, because somebody called our office, a young, remember the man that I called you about in Bigwell, an elderly that he, he didn't have an AC in his house at all. So we were trying to work a way that Commissioner Guadalupe, myself, emergency management could get the man. And so MHMR ended up coming through. And what MHMR does is that if they have a first come, first served basis, is how MHMR does it specifically for the, for the needy and the elderly. So they have that. They come and apply for it, and they qualify. They have somebody from MHMR that goes and makes sure that they plug it in and that they have it installed, because they did have a concern that they would give it, let's say Joblo comes in, applies for it, he qualifies, they give it to Joblo just in the box, but then Joblo goes and resells it, or he gives it to somebody else. So what MHMR advised my office was that they actually have one of their employees from MHMR and Lopez Home Healthcare that went to the man in Bigwell, his resident. They actually connected it for him, and they put it on. And the Lopez Healthcare lady called last week saying that he's still using it. So that's how they're able to do that. So perhaps we do, you know, that's how they do, first come, first served basis, and it's open to the entire, well, their community in Savala County. But in, or not Savala, but the counties that they serve, which is Savala, Dimmit, and LaSalle. So we could do that first come, first served basis, open to the whole county of Dimmit. And they apply with, on the qualifications, and then we can have either Mr. Hyman or somebody within the county to confirm that they're, you know, connecting it, that it's not a hazard.
What will be the reference in order for them to get one?
If MHMR has an application form, maybe we should get a copy of the application form and see if they're, we need to amend that form.
I think when we spoke to Bluebonnet, they're, they wanted to donate it, and their main concern was for anybody that was under privileged or your elderly. That is so hot right now. That was the main reason why they reached out to Carla, was because they wanted to make sure that people that were, could not afford it, or people that were elderly that were disadvantaged could be able to get it. So I think that, you know, obviously, it would be a first come, first served basis, but perhaps maybe having some kind of clause in there that, you know, that they're asserting income, maybe like the threshold of the government income or something to that effect. I don't, we can sit down with Mr...
Their medical needs might ultimately be the criteria. We have someone at home in hospice, and we don't have that condition, and they're in hardship. I think first priority, keeping this comfortable is possible. And then down the lines, whoever, based on their need. And that's where if they have a comparable device, the Lopez system, maybe they have assistance, they can do this, name, people in Dimmit County, they have a need, they consider it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action approval for TXCDPG Houston Street project payment number one.
On this regard, Judge, we just needed approval for payment, but I also noticed that they only submitted, I had put in for both of them, payment one on Houston Street and Brundage payment request three for the CDPG, which is the water pressure system. However, the only one that made it onto the document for today is payment one for Houston Street.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Ureda. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Discussion?
I don't know if we can amend it and put both, or... Because they made the draw, and we needed to deliver the payment within five days.
Well, I had already signed off on that P.O.
On the other one?
Yes, that's why Ms. Evanda only put the Houston Street one.
Okay, I just wanted to mention.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. A status report.
At the beginning of the month, grants and planning took a project to apply for building a dispatch pad in Big Wells. The grant that I applied to was LRC, Lower Colorado River Authority, also known as the Community Development Partnership Program. I am going to finish submitting that application today. All I need is a couple of forms from the Otter's Office, however, he was out, so I'll be updating those to the company and submitting the application. On another note, I'm applying, I'm looking towards applying to historical records keeping, public engagement, historical records, that's the name of the grant as well as.
Excuse me.
It was archival records, Grant. There was two grants that I was looking to apply to, those are due November, somewhere there, but that way I can start gathering my information regarding historical records or records keeping, anything with records management. That's, that sums up my report and I'll hand over the mic to Selena.
I'm in the process of finishing up the Texas Park of Wildlife Grant for the sports complex. It is due August 1st. I'm pretty much already done, just doing the last minute overviews to make sure that I have all my Ts crossed and my Is dotted. That and I am going to go with the judge so we can look over the OLS grant, just to make sure that everything is to our liking and so we can go ahead and submit. That's already been done. We're just pretty much just overviewing it at this time.
Judge, speaking on the, on the sport complex, this morning, Mr. Bustamante, Cleo Junior met with us or met, had a conversation with, and Mr. Druokawa, that he's willing to take for a scoreboard?
Awesome.
For the?
Baseball fields or something, for the football field?
Yes.
Awesome.
So, I don't know, the process, they might have to go through.
If you can get him with Ms. Selena Rodriguez, contact her because we're trying to get down all the, all the individuals, we've had several individuals reach out that they want to donate.
He was calling.
Cleo Junior.
My son is wanting to give.
Thank you.
Participate in the sport.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Druokawa, any discussion?
Judge, you were mentioning Commissioners for, I've been talking to Mr. Vallejos and I also talked to this other person, Mr. Zamora, and what we're trying to do, what I was trying to do is get to see if Yovalde would sponsor some facilities in Big Wells or in American where they can, we've got some empty buildings. So, I asked them to look into like welding, something that some young folks are not college bound, they can do trade. So, I asked them for electrical welding and then it was brought up to me for EMTs also and electrical, whatever trades there are. And I should get a response pretty soon because Mr. Vallejo knows.
He has the buildings.
President of Yovalde, so even if it's their name, but if we provide the building, I'm pretty sure we can figure something out.
Great.
He had asked me to look into it as well, I don't know if we can get to approve that or?
For?
He had asked me to look for trade schools to bring to Carrizo or Dimmitt County in general.
That would be great to be in communication with the junior college.
Yes, and I'm hoping that the SAD and Crystal City will make us up so we can, the Giants over there and over here, you and them can convince.
Yovalde Junior College.
Over here. Because there are a lot of young men and instead of them getting in trouble, they can learn a trade.
That would be great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Thank you, ladies. 6.1, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from County Treasurer, Mr. Oscar Ortiz.
The first two pages are the normal monthly report with the bank accounts and then payroll on the sales tax. And then the latter half of the report is the quarterly investment report.
I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Druokawa, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Odena, discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. 6.2, discussion and appropriate action, financial report from County Auditorium, Mr. Carlos Pereira, for the month of June 2023.
For the month of June, we have revenues of $18,893,000 and we have expenditures, which you get off the second page, of $11,400, I'm sorry, $11,415,000. So, that gives us $7,477,000 revenues through June. So, projecting that out, we should be revenues over expenses by the end of the year. And if you notice, the sales tax for the month of June was $429,000. And so, we've already exceeded our projected budget for sales tax by $160,000. So, that'll leave whatever July or September will be over, over the projected. And the same thing goes with the current taxes.
I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, second by Commissioner Druokawa. Any discussion or questions?
Just repeat. Where's my building?
I have to go check on it, executive order, but I hope that we had set it aside because he was, they were going to use that money to, correct to.
At this time, the time is 11:59. We're going to go into executive session. And off the record. We're back on record 1236 from executive session, no action taken. 6.3, discussion and appropriate action, budget adjustment within the fire department. Motion by Commissioner Druokawa, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All, any discussion?
Did you ever go to this or you agree with this?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention, Mr. Juan Carmona. 6.4, discussion and appropriate action, budget adjustment within the utility department.
Did we get the adjustments?
The copies of the adjustments? Yes, they're at the way back, like the last two pages. It is motion by Commissioner Druokawa, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention by Mr. Juan Carmona. At this time, I am going to recall items number 2.25, which is a discussion and appropriate action, the use of commercial vehicles, commercial vehicles, including 18-wheelers in Carrizo Hill subdivision, precinct 457.
Judge, I got a call from the Water District. They had concerns that the 18-wheelers are parking on the side of the road and they have their water lines. Have the water lines and sewer lines. So, I just brought it up for discussion because I want to see if we can utilize Edmond Road, 5056, Carrizo Hill Drive, Dobias Drive, Palo Verde Street, and Missy Street to designate those, those roads to come in and out.
I am.
I still do, hoping to see how we can do.
I agree. I think the way that we can do that is if we can get a vote from the Commissioners Court and then we can perhaps put it on the paper and on our Facebook pages and on our website that effective today, if we vote that these are the designated areas as passed by Commissioners Court to do parking for 18-wheelers.
But I'm busy with Mr. Gonzalez, I want to make sure that we're doing it the right way first. I'm just here, this is what I want to do, discussion as to how we can do it.
Okay, we can do that. So, I'll entertain a motion to table it. We have it on the, on the table as a discussion and then we can talk to Mr. Gonzalez and see legally if that's feasible. And if it is, then we can put it back on the agenda, approve it as like an ordinance, so to speak, and then it being enforced by sheriffs. And I'm hoping to close out by the end of this month, the code enforcement position, I have about three or four people that have applied for interviews and use them too to also patrol over there.
And I'm saying the reason he'll drive Palo Verde, Dobias, and Missy Street because that's where the, we have Jet, we have Earpin, and then have the new oil, the new oil company that's, I think by Missy Street. So, if they use those, they stay in that area, those roads, they can use to come in and out. Because they're going all around Carrizo Hill with the heavy equipment. So, they're damaging the roads and more, they're wanting.
And on those roads that you're talking about, there's not water lines, like on Dobias, some?
The, the water lines are on the side of the road.
Okay.
But some of these trucks are parking on the side of the road.
Okay, I see.
Inside the subdivision.
If I may, there's a couple of individuals that live in the neighborhood that are actual truck drivers and they'll park their truck off the edge of the pavement where the meters are at and that's causing damages to their, especially if it rains, you know, the area is soft and the heat, this equipment is heavier than just a normal vehicle. So, as well as people that most of them will park, especially if we get up on the, I don't know what street, and Columbia goes up, up the ramp on 83.
Palo Verde.
Okay. There used to be a couple of, they park there.
That one, but we already passed away. And the other ones were all the trucker companies that exist. And I know there's two that are truck drivers and the reason we've got, of course, that's their job, I mean, that's the way they make their living. I don't have to follow, the problem is these heavy trucks are coming in with equipment and parking on the other sides of the roads. And the Water District was having issues with that. They wanted to see what we can do or how we can address it. So, I said, well, let me put it in the Commissioners Court for discussion among us and see what we can do or what needs to be done.
I'll entertain a motion to table it so that, to authorize Commissioner Druokawa to get further discussion with our county attorney or in the alternative tack, maybe perhaps can give you advice in terms of the legalities of it and then have it brought back to Commissioners Court. I think it's a good idea though. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Odena. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. 2.26, discussion and appropriate action, approval to hire one full-time employee for the sanitation department.
Motion.
Judge, I wanted to see if we could change it to two sanitation employees, if not, I'll come back to Commissioners Court.
You're going to amend your motion? The, to reflect the approval of two full-time employees for the sanitation department? These are labor employees?
These are CDO drivers.
I'll entertain a motion to Commissioner Druokawa, amended, to reflect to hire two full-time employees for sanitation department?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. 6.5, clean docket. Do I have a clean docket, Mr. Pereira?
Yes.
Thank you. I have one in here. Oh, it's in the back. Thank you, Commissioner. The general fund is $500, $555,5114.28. Dimmitt County Clerk, $1,499.99. Dimmitt County District Clerk, $4,663.11. Excuse me. Dimmitt County Airport, $3,993.52. Dimmitt County Golf Course, $6,686.29. Courthouse Security, $1,564.72. Records Management County Clerk, $1,108.99. Utilities is $49,656.52. Rodeo Arena, $760. Stone Garden, $44,197.61. CDPG Community Development, $146,503.35. Dimmitt County Payroom, $365,001.83. CDPG Colonia Fund, $36,000. Interest and sinking, $11,057.25. COs 2019, $115.31. COs 2020, $157,772. For a grand total of $12,431,653.52. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Druokawa. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to recess, to adjourn, excuse me. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, second by Commissioner Druokawa. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The public facilities, facilities meeting, I am going to call the meeting to order. The time is 12:46. Roll call, let the record reflect that all Commissioners and county judges are present. Approval meeting to regular meeting, July 10th, 2023. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona? Second by Commissioner Druokawa. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. 2.1, discussion and appropriate action, new business. Any new business, Commissioner?
Judge, we're about caught up with everything and like I said, that has meaning, it was two men that I have to ruin a lot of. They wanted two lights there that, for they watch their cars, but they got about 15 lights across the wall, so I'm just going to take them off and just put two floodlights running the engine. So, that way we can save some money. We're going to take care of that.
I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Druokawa. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Odena. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. 3.1, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report, financial. I have a question. On the, on the maintenance and repair of buildings, the original budget called for his department to get $50,000, but on the current budget, it says it's budgeted $42,950. There's a decrease of like $7,000 something. Did you make it? No, I don't think he has. Right?
Yeah, because it was insurance. It went up by $7,000, that's why we took it from there and put it into.
Licensing and bonding? Okay.
Sorry, insurance deposit.
Okay. Any other questions?
To Jose and Cyrus, they didn't refund it.
Do you have a one?
Somebody had mentioned that they're the work for, that they go, when they go through the process of being interviewed for them to be to work there, that some of the, what's his name, Abel, he bonded because he handles all the air conditions and all that for the other section. So I know they have, we never done it, but I was just wondering.
Yeah, we've never done it, but if they're requiring it, there's something to look at. That they require.
Oh, that's Mr. Alada's. So they, so they handle money, they have to be bonded?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Anybody that handles money has to be bonded?
But I don't know if they require any other kind of bond.
Is there people?
I know, I can tell you guys that of course they are bonded. And you all told me that they didn't have to be bonded.
If they're not handling cash?
They have cash?
Then they would.
But I think they are. But we, because, okay.
We have bonded, we have bonded Virginia when I was, when I first came in, but Virginia no longer works there.
Yeah, I know, Anna.
Not Virginia, Anna, I'm thinking of her daughter.
You had said that they were going to work under Anna's bond. But we have to bond every one of them?
Whoever handles cash is.
Would they, every single one of them? I mean.
They all, that we need to. Who will work on it? Who will get that bond?
I've been asking the questions.
I've been asking too.
That we, we'll get a bond.
Any other discussion or question? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Three point two, the clean docket. Thank you. For public safety, $5,691.78. Thank you, Commissioner. Motion by Commissioner Rubokawa.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to recess and adjourn. Hold on, I have a question. Where is, Oscar, if we, can I piggyback off the public facilities? If I just recess so that we can have that meeting for the policy? For the policy with Selena and them, so that we can get them to do it within this next couple of days so that we can send it to the governor's office? Instead of me having to post and wait another 72 hours for a special meeting? I know I can do it on the, on the regular meeting, but I already recessed and adjourned. I'm talking about on the public facilities meeting, if I entertain a motion just to recess?
You can go back to the general, the regular meeting and reopen it.
That would be perfect. I'll entertain a motion to recess and adjourn the public facilities meeting. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rubokawa. Not for, not if we haven't recessed.
You still have to add an addendum on the other.
No, we do not. I asked TAC, that's what happened the last time. Well, then there's no point in me doing that. I just have a special meeting. I just need to have.
It has to be sent to ours.
Recess and adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This meeting has ended.